Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, might as well.
Okay, it's time for City Hall to be opened up and have in-person public meetings. This virus is not as bad as we all thought it would be and the city needs to change things to this new reality.
Let me get the uh, let me get this script out here.
We must stop this political game of our lives in this city and that will take leadership. Open up City Hall, our schools, our local businesses immediately. This council must also have some vision of the future and needs of higher education, fulfill a promise to Palmdale with a real community college campus.
Okay. Okay.
That was the only closed session item that we signed up for. That was the only closed session item that we signed up for.
Okay, and it was a, looks like there was a redundant one. Okay, and it was a, looks like there was a redundant one. For eleven, okay, alright, that's for later, says the same thing. For eleven, okay, alright, that's for later, says the same thing. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, city, city attorney? Okay, so we'll go ahead and, city, city attorney?
Thank you mayor, it's just the two items that are listed on the agenda to be discussed this evening. Thank you mayor, it's just the two items that are listed on the agenda to be discussed this evening.
Okay, very good, alright, we will go to closed session and see y'all back here. Okay, very good, alright, we will go to closed session and see y'all back here.
City Attorney report out from the closed session?
All the members of the City Council were present either in person or remotely and were able to participate in all matters. With regard to item four point one, City of Palmville versus Westwind Enterprises LLC at all, the City Council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office. There's no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item four point two, potential initiation of litigation, one matter, the City Council received a report regarding potential litigation and provided unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office. There's no further reportable action at this time. And that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll get started here in just a minute then on the seven o'clock meeting. Session meeting, we'll call to order the, uh, we'll call to order the adjourned, uh, regular meeting. Can we, uh, all stand and do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of our troops? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, a nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, so there was a, uh, I had a request to, uh, move the public hearing, item number fourteen, up to undo the consent calendar first and the number eleven, twelve, and undo fourteen. Hearing nothing, I think we'll go ahead and, uh, do, uh, do public comments, uh, on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I need to do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that? Yes, please.
Mayor Hoffauer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temloa?
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Carillo?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We're all still here. Okay, so on item eleven, um, you want to, uh, do this, JJ?
Sure. We have one comment that I see on item eleven. It is time for City Hall to be opened up and have in-person public meetings. This virus is not as bad as we all thought it would be, and the city needs to change things to this, to this new reality. We must stop this political game of our lives in the city, and that will take leadership. Open up City Hall, our schools, and our local businesses immediately. This council must have, this council must also have some vision of future needs of higher education, fulfill the promise to Palmdale with a real community college campus.
Alright, thank you. Consent calendar. Item number twelve. Do we want to, uh, there's one item on the consent calendar? I had, uh, I was told there might be a desire to, uh, table this item to the next regular, and then the next meeting? Is that was, was that your intent?
Which item?
Twelve point one?
That was my intent. I did make a motion to table this item, um, because of the fees that could potentially still be lingering. We don't know what the total amount is gonna be. I know there was a, a projection. But I see that we can wait two more weeks. The next City Council is in two weeks, September second or whatever day that is. Would that be too damaging for
Oh, sir.
two weeks?
So the, the item before you is an item to amend the legal services agreement for Richard Swatson and Gershon. They're currently serving the city on several matters.
Right.
And that we do need to increase the amount to continue to pay them. So, uh, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what a postponement of, of two weeks will do. Maybe nothing, but I'm, I can't speak for them.
So this is what I think two weeks could do. If we can get what amount is owed to them for the legal services up to the next two weeks, then the council will know what amount is owed to them for the services that they have provided so far. And I believe that you said that if we kept them on a couple of issues they're working on through September, that could then, could potentially be another forty thousand dollars. So there was a number thrown out during the discussion that it could be seventy-five thousand dollars up to today. If we continue with our services on those two items or the one item, then it, through September, it could be another forty thousand. So if we, the council does not know if there is seventy-five thousand dollars owed to them at this point, but if there is, adding forty thousand dollars to the seventy-five thousand, that could get us to, close to one hundred and fifty. So if we can find out in two weeks what their due amount is, then the council would have a more informed decision to make. And that way we can know if we could seek advice from another law firm that could deliver quicker as the discussion was. I understand that going to another firm, there'll be some backlash because they would have to go through this, uh, document searching and all of that stuff. But from what I heard from the council, there was concern that the bill just keeps coming in and this particular, um, ordinance, the rent control, just keeps dragging on down the street. That's the reasoning for me asking if we can table this item at least in two weeks. If that's sufficient time to find out what their total due amount is.
Mr. Carrillo, I'll second the motion.
I thought there was a second when I made the motion, so.
We couldn't have one there, because that wasn't the topic.
Okay.
So, yeah, so now it is, okay. So the, the motion, as I understand it, is to table the item and to direct staff to bring back?
What their due amount is as of in the next two weeks. So that we know how much money we have to pay them for the services already rendered. That way we know if the hundred and fifty would be, fifty percent would be already gone. Then we'll have another item for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in a month or so.
So we have our, we have our new City Attorney coming in. I know that by the next meeting he'll only, he'll only be here a couple of days, but at least he'll have an opportunity to review as much as he can the billing practices of this law firm. I mean, as, as much as he can, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Graham will, will assist him in that. So.
Sure.
Essentially, I'll call for the question.
So I have a motion to table the item until the next regular meeting? Mayor Hoffauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temloa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
The motion carries with five yes votes.
Let them know we need a...
So Mayor, I was asking that fourteen point one and fourteen point two be moved ahead of the, uh, presentations on the fireworks and homelessness?
Yes, any, uh, any objection?
Nope.
Okay, so, uh, rearranging the, uh, we'll pull the public hearing items, uh, to the front right now, so we'll move on to item number fourteen point one. And Mister, oh, okay, I was looking for Mister Beehan. So on fourteen point one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, tonight before you is, uh, resolution number CC twenty twenty zero eight nine ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation, uh, temporarily allowing businesses to operate outdoors and waiving parking requirements to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. If the council will indulge me, um, just, uh, in June, I was before you, our team was before you regarding the first phase of what we call Palmdale alfresco. That first phase included allowing restaurants and other food and beverage businesses to expand their operations outdoors to increase capacity, to allow, uh, for social distancing. I am proud to report to you that our team, uh, went out. We currently have thirty-seven restaurants and expanding, um, as, um, this unfortunate period of time we're in goes by. Um, our team was able to go out and really accomplish two things. Not only increase, um, business participation in this program, but I think achieve another objective under the Palmdale Cares is reach out to our businesses and begin forming a relationship with them. And I can attest to that fact of just having the opportunity to go speak to these businesses and say, regardless of whether you participate or not, we're here for you. If there's anything you can do, here's our card, please give us a call. It really accomplishes, um, as I mentioned, what Palmdale Cares is all about. Leading up to tonight and since, uh, June sixteenth, um, I provided the council a timeline here just to get an idea of some of the changes that we've seen, um, facing our city. June twenty-first, cases began rising at an alarming rate in LA County, um, leading to the July first, um, shutdown of indoor dining again, as well as family centers, movie theaters, zoos, museums, and other businesses for LA County. July thirteenth, uh, the governor ordered, uh, for counties on the watch list, closure of indoor operations for hair salons, barber shops, personal care services, gyms and fitness centers, and that's what's before you tonight. Between July thirteenth and August thirteenth, uh, we, our team not only solicited, um, feedback from these types of, types of businesses, but, uh, received a number of calls of businesses that were interested in looking at how can we operate outdoors? What can the city do to assist us? So we, as a team, again, reached out and solicited the ways in which we can accomplish this, and staff felt it was in the best interest to move forward with an immediate proclamation by, um, City Manager J.J. Murphy and his role as Emergency Services Director to immediately allow these businesses to begin operating with a proper application. And then what we would do is come before you tonight, uh, with this resolution ratifying that. Just very quickly, again, touching on July, this resolution largely concerns the, uh, governor's orders of July thirteenth and the applicable businesses and other, um, places of worship that would be allowed to, um, participate under this application, are before you. Again, the personal care services, hair salons, barber shops, gyms and fitness centers, places of worship, and other faith-based services. Uh, the resolution before you tonight does two things. Number one, it ratifies, as I mentioned, the Director of Emergency Services proclamation, which without, um, passing of the resolution tonight would expire at eleven fifty-nine. And then it formally waives provisions of the Palmdale Municipal Code, as well as any other permits regarding the parking requirements for businesses, uh, which will allow these businesses to then temporarily expand into their private parking lots. A notable difference between this program and our alfresco, our first round with the restaurants, is this program is only for private parking lots. We're not, um, not allowing the businesses to go out onto the public sidewalk and operate. Uh, we believe, especially with gyms and a lot of larger footprints that be created, that private parking lots are the best, um, best and safest manner in which these businesses can operate. I just wanted to touch a moment on some of the revisions to our guidelines. Uh, you will remember, uh, with number one, we asked that the applicant fill out the no fee city application. Uh, the application and the businesses are still submitting a site plan depicting the use of their proposed outdoor space within the private parking lot. The addition to, um, these revised guidelines is the LA County Fire has asked the applicants to also fill out a questionnaire. Now, that questionnaire, to be very clear, um, the city staff worked with LA County Fire, and they also have committed to being business-friendly and being very pro-business, and they came very understanding of what our businesses are going through. So it is a no-fee questionnaire. It simply asks and solicits information from these businesses and for really the overall goal of essential public safety. The large part of what they're looking for is if these businesses are choosing to allow tents or other pop-up canopies. Uh, that's their largest concern, and Fire will work with them to ensure that they are done in a safe, uh, a safe manner for operation. Again, uh, property owner's permission is required, so that same consent statement would apply, as well as the overall program criteria that remains ADA compliance is essential. Exits must not be blocked or enclosed. Fire lanes and hydrants must be kept clear and accessible. And businesses must remain in compliance with all the health orders and applicable resolutions. And I'm available for any questions. I did read the, uh, title of the resolution, so, um, happy to answer any questions.
So the ADA compliance, uh, requires any of these, uh, businesses to have, um, certain dimensions on whatever is being offered for the handicapped persons, including, for example, in restaurants, the height of tables and markings for restroom facilities and things of that sort?
That's correct. The largest concern is, um, obviously pathway and accessibility, uh, especially if the businesses are operating in the parking lot. We don't want these businesses to be blocking, um, blocking or preventing access to, uh, ADA parking lo, uh, parking spaces or blocking essential path of travel to, into the business. Um, I would say secondarily, are those reasons you just, um, discussed?
Okay. I applaud the effort. I think it's, um, I think it's great we're doing everything we can to get these businesses to reopen safely, but I can't help but feel that it's, it's extremely challenging for, for businesses and, and customers to be out on a hundred-degree block top. Right now, it just doesn't seem like it's, that's also not safe. I mean, with the extreme temperatures, I would imagine, you know, people are gonna have to hydrate and, and it's just gonna be difficult as well with the extreme weather right now.
I, I actually have been out to some of the fresco restaurants, um, in the past, and it, it, the heat is an issue, the wind is an issue, now the smoke is an issue. Are they allowed to put in any kind of cooling devices, like fans or misters of any kind?
Um, I, our building and safety team, along with the LA Fire, are willing to work with any of the businesses if they're interested, and, um, if they express interest, then just contact the city. We can get them if there's any additional permits or anything they need. I would say to answer your question, certainly the electrical would be an issue. Um, and if, just making sure that it's, uh, outdoor compliant, um, electric access as well as the, um, any of the extension cords or, or such. I would say our, our building and safety team, along with the LA County Fire, recently visited a number of our participating businesses in our alfresco restaurant program. And, uh, very positive notes came back from our building and safety team. Very, very minor issues, and we're, we're working with each one of these applicants and getting them, um, getting any, anything really corrected. To speak to the electrical, they'd be able to come in and fill out a no cost, just minor electrical permit. If, if needed, if they don't already have access to it, we can get them, get them going.
The outdoor dining thing, I see how that works, because, I mean, a lot of restaurants already have outdoor dining and patio seating as it is. Is this when it gets into stuff like nails and hair and, and things like that? It's just becomes hard to understand how that's gonna work.
I would love to get my hair done. This is awful. And I, I know that you probably have the same concern.
I'm very concerned.
But no, I think, you know, people need to feel good about themselves. We're in a really tough time and, and getting your nails done, getting your hair done, looking professional at work makes a person feel better. Um, just like going to religious services makes a person feel better. And we don't wanna lose any of our businesses, especially these mom-and-pop shops. I mean, it's extremely important. And we don't wanna lose any of our businesses, especially these mom and pop shops, I mean, it's extremely important to, to give them the opportunity to, to bring in whatever income they can to survive.
The salons have reached out, the salons seem to have the biggest voice right now as far as wanting to reopen safely and, and be allowed to enter into their establishment again.
It's very important.
What's happening with the Health Department on that, because I know that previously the, these salons were told they could not operate outside under state law. So have they given, has that been given a waiver?
So that's what delayed staff's implementation of the program is the first week that the governor made these orders, the, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't remember the, that cosmetology, the state level, came out and immediately said, well, no, no one can operate outside. So there's a little bit of a disconnect in terms of what was going on in Sacramento. Our salons and, and barber shops and that whole industry went up and did a lot of protesting, a lot of outreach to assembly members, state senators, and what you saw was a, a quick, within the week correction at the state level, which gave them the authority to operate. Certainly with the personal care services, there are some limitations into what you can and cannot do. And I think to speak to your point, council member, the commitment, you know, Palmdale Cares has really just been about providing as much support as we can to our, our businesses and our community at this time, and it really may not fit every single type of business, but at the same time, staff is committed to doing whatever they can to provide, you know, as many, I call them, you know, arrows ready to go and tools ready to use for these businesses should they choose to execute that. That's, that's been staff's commitment, and that continues to be staff's commitment.
Are we continuing to have the discussion with these guys about when they're, when they're doing the outside dining? About how they can do it so they can leave it in, in a, in a, some sort of a permanent nature? Because some of these guys have got a substantial investment in, because they have to buy new furniture, a lot of them had to buy new furniture because they had fixed banquets and things like that. So you're not gonna be able to take a whole set of booths and take them outside in many cases. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can streamline that process that they wanna move from, especially for the ones that aren't necessarily in the parking lot, but they're, they're within the, you know, the, the front, the patios and walkways and stuff, to make that, make that more, more of a regular deal for them. Because some are figuring out, in some cases, with a little bit of shade, but the misters, it's not so bad.
And I, I'll certainly agree with you, we have had conversations with some restaurants that have expressed interest in making certain alterations permanent. And we will continue, you know, the planning staff and Carleen and Mike can speak to this, but we will continue to work with the businesses should they look at a transition, and, and if that's the road they choose to go down, we will support them and, and guide them to the extent we can.
That was my main concern, is just making sure this is, you know, I applaud the effort and everything we're doing to try to support these small businesses, but it's, it's a safety first thing. As far as the power, the misters, the fans, the wind, the fire, the heat. So I just wanna make sure whatever we're doing, we're making sure that we're doing it as safe as possible for the businesses and the patrons that are going to.
Are we having this conversation with the health inspectors as well? That's the biggest pushback I think I'm getting right now from facilities is, they had one place put up a tent, and then they said, the inspector came in and said, you gotta take that wall down. Meanwhile, we're sitting here trying to put stuff on our table to keep the, just to keep dinner from blowing away, you know? So I mean, some, sometimes it's like, what's a common, what's a common sense here? The three walls are open, they got one closed, and they're doing battle with the health inspector.
And I, I don't recall the specific COVID-related compliance, but it, there has been a lot of back and forth on how many walls you can put up into a tent. You know, we'll certainly work to reach out to them and try to mediate the best we can, but I know those health inspectors have been going out to these businesses, because I believe you only can, you, you, you cannot close more than one side of the wall, you're absolutely right.
And where did that come from, though? I mean, what's the basis for that?
Well, if they have a closed tent, it's just like being indoors.
Well, right, yeah. But what's enclosed, I mean, if it's, if they've got the, the screen, or if it's totally closed? And, and, and if, in, in this particular case, this restaurant was up against their building, the, the tent, and it was over by the other building, but there was about a foot gap on, on each of these. The far end was open, and they had the sunny side closed. And there was this debate about, well, no, it's all enclosed. No, it's not, there's not, we don't have walls here.
So Mayor, I can just tell you from the conversation that staff had with the LA County Fire Department when this first came up, the, in the situation you ju- just explained, having the tent up against the wall, that counts as the one wall that can be opened, so if they have it closed, another one, that would be two that's not allowed.
Well, I don't think that's in the fire departments, I think that's the Health Department made the ventilation issue. Fire department only kicks in when it, when the tent's over a certain number of square feet, so maybe a little bit over.
It's, it, it is a COVID-related LA County regulation.
I think we're getting lost in the details now, because.
Well, if we're getting lost, and how you think some poor guy out there trying to, trying to serve dinner and pay his, you know?
Yeah, that's why I'm hoping staff can help guide them safely.
Bottom line, our intent here is to continue assisting not just the public, but these businesses, and for many of them, and particularly with the restaurants that have been able to open with outside dining, that's the only source of income they're having, which means that's the only income that is going to the landlords in the cases where the, the business is renting. So the whole thrust of this thing is to assist in that direction, and I think that this whole discussion is important for you guys to, you know, administer this and do the best you can to handle it out there with the public and the businesses. But I think we should approve this, and we ought to do it now.
You know, I just wanna make a comment here that my heart really goes out to the small business owners. Before COVID nineteen, a lot of small businesses struggle to stay, stay open, provide the services. Now with this, they are working five times even more harder to keep their business afloat. And the, the employees themselves, those that are fortunate to keep their, their employment, they're just working hard. You know, limited services, and they're just running back and forth in the heat of what we're experiencing now. And it's just heroic to me, in my opinion, what they're trying to do, keep their business afloat.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. My point was is that I think sometimes people are, agencies sometimes try to find a purpose. Because if they show up and they don't fix anything, why bother having them? So I'm, you know, I, I just, I'm just concerned that everybody is staying in their lane, and if they're not, if we need to have that conversation up the political lines, you know, we may have to do that. So that, I just wanna make sure that that's what's occurring here, because adding more bureaucracy when we're trying to make it easier doesn't help them. So I'll make a motion, we approve the item.
Okay. Do we need any public comment?
Public comments? I, I just wanna applaud staff for all of, all the effort you put into this, I appreciate it, I, I think our city, our entire council appreciates it. And I truly hope that each month that you bring us new things that we get to open and, and innovative ways to every, every month get closer and closer to the new normal. So thank you for your efforts, and thank your team on behalf of the council for all that you guys have done.
Certainly.
Jump to gun there, I, I will withdraw the motion. Mister Murphy, do we have any public comment, or city clerk?
Yes, we have one, sir. This is a good program, but the city should be backing it with funding, they received an emergency COVID funding from the feds. The city's hoarding funding that is meant to help businesses and citizens. I recommend the city reimburse and pay businesses for all the expenses that they have to deal with COVID nineteen orders immediately. Spend money now, this virus and the regulations are nonsense. Businesses should not have to be burdened financially with this political virus anymore. Write them a check, council. That was from Mister Zink.
Okay, I will now make the motion to approve the resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eight nine.
Okay.
Okay, we do a voice vote, Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
The motion carries with five yes votes.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen point two. Thank you, Drew, good job, and all your staff. Fourteen two. Jason, you got this one, huh?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you have a resolution, number CC two zero two zero dash zero eight seven to set fees associated with an appeal application. An appeal is an argument or a plea to a hearing body, in this case, either the Planning Commission or City Council, in an effort to reverse a decision. There are two different types of projects, a project reviewed administratively and a project considered by a hearing body, and both of these projects can be appealed. We are proposing to have a separate fee for an appeal of a project that is approved administratively, and a fee for an appeal of a project that is approved by a hearing body. Administrative decisions are those approved by staff at the public counter or by the planning manager. Examples of an administrative application would be a zone clearance, a minor modification, or a temporary use permit for projects such as, in addition to a single-family home, minor accessory structures to a commercial development, Christmas tree lots, things of that nature. An appeal of administrative decision would be appealed to the Planning Commission. And we also have hearing body decisions, which are considered by the hearing officer or the planning commission. Examples of an application that would be considered by a hearing body would be a site plan review application, conditional use permit, tentative tract map, and these are for new development projects such as a multifamily residential building, a commercial shopping center, or a tract map for a future subdivision. The decision of a hearing body can be appealed to the next hearing body. For example, a decision made by the hearing officer would be appealed to the Planning Commission, and a decision made by the Planning Commission would be appealed to the City Council. And then just to reiterate, we are proposing to have a separate fee for both of these types of applications, for both of these types of appeals of applications. Here is a history of the appeal fee in Palmdale, starting from nineteen eighty-eight, all the way up until present day, and the last time we had a change to our appeal fee was in two thousand fourteen, where it was set at seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's where it currently is today. We also did a comparison of what some of the neighboring jurisdictions are doing. And as you can see, both Lancaster and Santa Clarita have separate fees based on whether the appeal will be heard by Planning Commission or City Council. So we're proposing to do a very similar thing here. So for a staff time, the amount of staff time it takes to process an appeal application is based on the staff time allocation chart that was attached to your staff report. It takes staff approximately forty-two hours to process an appeal of an administrative decision, which includes review of the application, preparing the staff report and presentation materials, attending and presenting the project at the meeting, and finally closing out the, the file after the decision has been made. In comparison, a project considered by a hearing body that is appealed takes staff approximately sixty-three hours to process. This includes the preparation, attendance, and presentation of the project with the first hearing body, as well as the preparation, attendance, and presentation of the appeal to the next hearing body, such as the City Council. Based on the time spent by individual staff and the fully burdened rate of staff with the appeal process, it costs the city approximately six thousand seventy-one dollars to process an appeal of an administrative decision, and approximately ten thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars to process an appeal of a hearing body decision. So in conclusion, we have the proposed fee for an appeal of an administrative decision would be set at two hundred fifty dollars, while the fee for an appeal of a hearing body decision would remain at the current rate of seven hundred fifty dollars. The city will operate at a loss with this, with the proposed fees, however, we will continue to facilitate a business-friendly relationship with our community. City council has three options, option one is to adopt the resolution, option two is to continue the item and direct staff to return with more information, and option three is to deny the item. We recommend option one, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments on this item?
Yes, sir, we do, we have one from Mister Zink. I agree with this a hundred percent of lowering fees to make Palmdale more business-friendly and just more fair. Good policy, and whoever thought of this should be recognized. The majority of appeal decisions were overturned. At the end of the day, it is the City Council policy, not Appeals Board and Planning Commission, and financial burden should not keep a person from being heard by decision and policymakers. Good job, and council should fully support this.
Thank you. Council, any comments or questions of the staff?
First, I would say, Justin, is this the first time you've spoken before us?
Um, I, I've, I've been here a couple of times, but it's been a couple of years now.
Okay, well, welcome, welcome aboard, you did a great job, and so we appreciate you doing what you do.
Thank you.
Good job, Justin.
Very much.
I said Jason, right?
No one heard.
Liz says Behan, so, all right, so I was halfway there, so. Mr. Loa, anything?
Whatever name you go by, congratulations.
It's like, Michelle?
No, I think this is a great idea, Juan is actually the one that brought this up, I think Juan's actually brought this up for a couple of years, I think he's been fighting for this. And I, I have to say, this was an eye-opener for me, being as I, I don't have the money to ever build anything. I was, I was actually shocked at how much it costs to, to do a review, and until Juan brought it up. As a, 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 a single, you know, lady with a home, if I wanted to make changes and I had a, an appeal, I, I would never be able to afford it. I think this makes it more affordable for our residents and people at, at all economic levels to, to have an appeal if they need it. So I think our, our residents appreciate this, and, and thank you so much for doing it.
I, I agree, I, I remember when we were going over our revised fees a few months back, we noticed there's increases in a lot of them, and this is the one that stuck out. I think for a lot of us, it was important to see these fees go down, because we wanna have that push to become more business-friendly, and by putting this into play, it proves just that, that we wanna be more business-friendly, we wanna see more stuff get done within the community.
Well, and, and I think too, it's not just for being business-friendly, but I think, you know, Juan, and, and with us on the east side, social justice is a really big deal, having social justice issues where people, all people can afford to have an appeal. Because honestly, if, I, I would never be able to make an appeal with some of the, the prices that other cities charge. So it, it's really appreciated, truly is, for, for people of all economic backgrounds.
Especially with our, our general plan right now being pretty strict, and like, like they're saying, how most things have to come to council anyway. With the way it's written, it's, it definitely helps, because a lot of people do need to end up going to council to get something voted on as far as projects go for development, stuff like that.
One of the things I've seen that a lot of communities do, I mean, I, I, I'm okay with this, but I know a lot of communities will give that reduced fee if you're within the public hearing notice zone. So if you're within the five hundred or thousand feet of the project, and you got a mailer, you get that reduced fee. But if you're outside that, and the, so the implication, or, or the the inference that you didn't get the notices is that, that the state and the courts have decided you're not as nearly as impacted, then I, then I've seen them charge that, that higher fee. So I think we need to take, keep an eye out for who's really making these appeals? Are these really the neighbors that are making appeal, or is it somebody that just doesn't happen to like that builder? Like who's on this council, doesn't like the, that kind of deal? You know, I, I know that's a long shot, but it could happen. So, but I mean, we just need to, let's keep an eye on how that, you know, how this progresses here, so, you know.
Is it mostly residents that file appeals? I mean, do we have a study on who files appeals? Residents versus developers versus business people versus realtors or whatever?
Not miss? All right, Carleen, go for this one.
That's the boss.
So we looked at how many were granted versus denied, we didn't dive deep into the application type, so if it was a builder or a resident for this, but we're happy to provide that data, we did a lot of research, and I'm sad to say that that was not a leaf we turned over.
I, I think this is a, this is a good move at this time, particularly with what's happening with the virus and what's, and the impacts on the economy, this is probably good to make it affordable to residents, to make appeals. But in the future, I, I do think that we need to look at it in terms of how much it's costing the city to manage or administer these appeals. And, and perhaps there should be as, if we review who the appellants are, and we, if we have developers or people with more means to pay, perhaps there could be some sort of a scale, I don't know if that would pass legal muster or not, but we should review this in a couple of years.
I think a lot of it does come down to the general plan, because more often than not, we hear that, you know, staff's hands are tied, because the general plan says they're not able to do something, and which then it goes to planning, and which then it comes to council. So I think, you know, long term, when we get this general plan update, updated, we'll be able to make, we'll be able to put policies in place. Uh, we'll be able to put policies in place that are, are more business friendly, that, that prevent this process and all this staff time from happening, but for where we're at right now, and. A few years away from getting this.
Don't bet it goes away just because you changed the general plan.
So, so Carleen, Justin, and, and Mr. Behan, you guys have done a great job on this. I really appreciate it. Um, and because I am a data nerd, you guys know that I am, I think it would be a great idea, not, not to go into the past and look, but with a new fee schedule, just. Little checkbox, whether it's a resident, a developer, that would be awesome to know, if you have a summer intern that can help with that or something. Um, but yeah, because I'm a, I'm a data nerd, and I, I like that kind of stuff, so.
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's good information to know. Also, are these, is it the neighbor? That is, that has filed the, the appeal, is it the, is it the applicant that fired, filed the appeal? Or is it somebody twelve miles away that filed the appeal, you know, outside that, that notice zone or something like that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bishop?
Second?
Before we vote, I'd like to say something. So I want to thank the Council for supporting um, this um. Free resolution. And I'll have to tell you that um. I, I see this as putting it in the, leveling the playfield, as the saying goes. And um, some of the questions that you ask, I'll give an example. Developers that build three hundred and twenty-six homes applied for twenty-three minor exemptions, and they were all approved. Asking a reduction of a ten percent of a setback deviation, which is two feet, not twenty foot setback. Then a homeowner applies for it, and it gets denied. And I just don't see how um, that is fair. And equitable to homeowners. Who are little guys, just trying to have an extra living room or a bedroom, or you know, whatever the case may be, a game room. And then here comes the big developers who asked for twenty-three minor exemptions for a two-foot deviation. No questions asked. They are processed routinely during the high boom of the housing industry, and that's just one development. Just think about citywide. So again, to me, I, I do appreciate your, your support on this, and again, it's leveling the playfield. Uh, for the little guys that just want to improve their property. Which at the NVA benefits all of us, because it will create a better quality of life, having more room. Especially with the, we have demographics, Hispanic families, I have four kids. You know, and. But I, I don't regret it. I love my kids. And I really enjoy um, being a dad, having twins, and all the responsibilities and the joys that come with it. But it is just one small little step on what we can do to make this reasonable. Uh, I'll have to make another comment on the fees. I, I do disagree with the cost associated with processing an appeal, but I'll leave it at that. Because I used to do it, and I do it. Uh, as a government agency, we have to justify our cost to provide services. I think it's a little high, what you guys put on staff report, because my opinion doesn't take that long really, for a room addition that has to be appealed. You know, for zoning changes, you know, plan amendments, those are gigantic projects. And who are building those projects? Gigantic corporations. Seven hundred and fifty dollars to them is peanuts. Seven hundred and fifty dollars for someone like me or like you.
Oh my god.
Especially when you factor in the cost of a zoning clearance, fifty dollars. And to appeal my denied application, seven hundred and fifty dollars that we had to pay. So thank you, Council. Thank you, staff, for the work that you've done, and to me, again, it's just a, a small step in trying to. Uh, provide to our residents a better quality of life that is affordable. Thank you.
I think that uh. We've had quite a bit of turnover in our staff. And I've got to commend our development team, economic development and planning teams here. I think they're taking a lot more realistic view of things. It's just not a, I don't like it, so forget it. So I think that they're, they're looking at this stuff from a realistic, and what was the intent of the policy? Um, and uh, and trying to find that way to uh, uh, to, to assist that. That, whether it's the homeowner, whether it's the commercial developer, you know, whomever, I think they're working a lot harder towards that end. So I, I know my phone isn't blowing up like it was a while back, so anyways, um, so I, do, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, um, anything else to call for the vote?
Call for the question.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pocatello?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cariel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
The motion carries with five yes votes.
Thank you, man. And then we'll go back to our special reports, presentations. Thirteen point one on um. Fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's firework presentation will include information regarding the safe and sane fireworks, as well as the enforcement of the. Use and sales of illegal fireworks. Currently, the city's ordinance allows one safe and sane booth for every three thousand residents. As of January one, twenty twenty, the Department of Finance reported our population to be one fifty-six, seven thirty-seven. Um, we currently allow fifty-two booths in the city of Palmdale. The price of each booth varies depending on if it's a first-time group or a renewal. It also depends on the type of property where the booth is located. Over the past five years, we've seen a slight drop in the number of booths. In twenty sixteen, we had a total of forty-seven booths, and in twenty twenty, we had a total of thirty-nine booths. Five hundred dollars of the money collected from the permitting process of the booths. Is allocated to the enforcement of the sales and use of illegal fireworks. The remaining portion is allocated to outreach and education. Recently, Council adopted an ordinance number one five four seven, which modified and amended PMC section eight point oh four. Zero seven zero and zero nine zero. The intent of the modification is to ensure that the fireworks proceeds are spent on organizations and activities within the city of Palmdale limits. In an effort to deter the use of illegal fireworks, the city spends approximately nine thousand six hundred dollars in outreach and education. From newsletters, social media, magazines, um, billboards, auto mall boards, et cetera. The Code Enforcement Division partners with the Palmdale Sheriff's Department to enforce the use of sales and illegal fireworks on the fourth. And several weeks prior, leading up to the fourth of July. The team works cohesively to investigate the use of illegal fireworks, undercover buys and sales. Um. We do undercover operations at some of the safe and sane booths to see if by chance they are selling the illegal fireworks. Which we have yet to observe that, and issue citations as needed. Okay, I'm sorry, guys. So that is a breakdown of how the. The outreach and the education funds are spent each year, what we pay to the Sheriff's Department over time, what we pay through our communications, and through public safety. The calls that come into the Sheriff's Department and the city of Palmdale, this year, we have a total of six hundred and. I'm sorry, guys.
Seventy.
Six hundred and seventy calls, um, four hundred and sixty were called into the station, and two hundred and ten were called into the city. Um, this year, the city made lots of efforts to field calls after hours. We had some city lines were forwarded to cell phones for administrative staff so that we could capture as many of those calls as possible. And direct our field staff to respond to the complaints. Um, we are already working on some. Other efforts that we'd like to implement next year. We believe we could be a little more successful, starting at the end of May and following through the end of July. Versus just a couple of weeks prior to the fourth of July. We have finally narrowed down a city of Palmdale direct line that we can have answered twenty-four seven. By utilizing some of our public security officer staff who is stationed at the train station for that amount of hours. So that would be a live body that could also help dispatch calls to the field. This year, we had a little bit of an impact. Well, I shouldn't say little, we had a large impact of emails coming in and phone calls coming in related to the fireworks. As well as the um. The tragic death of Robert Fuller and the BLM protests all slammed us at the same time, so we had a little bit of a harder time than expected. With the response time to responding specifically to fireworks. Fires reported this year, we had five fires total that were related to fireworks. They were all related to illegal fireworks in vacant fields. We had zero structure fires, and there was an additional thirteen fires that night that the fire department responded to. But none of them were associated with fireworks. It was a busy night for the fire department, but not necessarily all fireworks related. This year, the teams combined between the Sheriff's Department and Code Enforcement collected five hundred and twenty-six pounds of unspent illegal fireworks. Some of that was done through undercover buys, meeting up people in different parking lots and whatnot, where we found our tips online. And the others were taking the unspent fireworks at the time of the citation was issued while they were lighting them. This year, we issued sixty-six administrative citations. That is the most successful year we've had actually in the last twelve years. So I'm very proud of those efforts. Um, again, that was a combined effort between the Sheriff's Department and the Code Enforcement team working together. Revenue collected from the administrative citations can be a little bit challenging. As you can see on this slide, there's the total outstanding bail amount is significantly high to what we actually collect. Part of our efforts are, we send them to a collection agency if they're not paid on time, and we also forward them to the franchise tax board. But we do run into a little bit of pushback from the Superior Court Judge. He likes to reduce our fees significantly as he feels our two thousand five hundred dollar bail amount is a little excessive.
Can we get the name of that judge so we remember that at election time?
Uh, we absolutely can. It's been the same judge for the last several years that we've gone before, and we bring a pretty solid case with us. Sometimes we have video, we have photographs for sure, always.
Listen, quality of life issue for the community, so I think that's an important thing. We're all doing this, we've got the staff out there working, we're putting a lot of time and effort into this, and for it to be, you know, just summarily dismissed. And I can guarantee you that they're not lowering it below what the court cost is to operate that, so.
Yes, that's a little bit of our frustration. Yep, I agree. This is a physical overview of the revenue that's spent, the revenue that's collected from the booths. And collected from the citations and where this city balances each year. A few items for our Council to consider is to petition the state to direct increased enforcement action. It's my understanding that the state has. Removed some funds that were dedicated to this, which have, I think severely impacted us in other cities that I've reached out to that are experiencing the same problems that we are. There's an increase for budget for more proactive enforcement. And always to include or add additional city facilitated activities such as concerts and firework shows and whatnot. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, before we get into that, uh, public comments, Mr. Murphy, do we have?
We have quite a few. Mr. Zink, uh, why is there no staff report? How can the public give input if they do not know summary of the subject? Common sense and laziness, the lack of counsel to have higher standards and common courtesy for public continues. It's not right, it needs to change. How hard is it to have staff write up a summary? Open up City Council meetings to in-person meetings. This virus is BS, and you all know it. Next one, Richard and Linda Hayes. We support safe and sane sales. Palmdale American Legion Post three forty-eight has relied on sales of fireworks for many, many years. We desperately need funds, as explained in emails we sent to each of you today. We ask that you don't punish nonprofits. Punish the ill, illegal actions of others who selfishly don't follow laws and disrupt our lives. Let's work together to find a way to stop the illegal fireworks activity in Palmdale. We will volunteer to work up on a task force. We are also fed up. Uh, Terry Story. Please do not add additional bureaucratic regulatory burdens to those organizations that depend on safe and sane fireworks for the annual budgets. Fine and cite those that use illegal fireworks and make it hurt. My dogs are not bothered by safe and sane fireworks, but they are traumatized by il- illegal blast and airborne mess that is unleashed every year from those. That do not have any common, any concern about the ca- uh, chaos. Uh, that they incur through their use. Leave the good guys alone, get the bans. From a guest, the sale of safe and sane fireworks is a legal practice in California and should be allowed in Palmdale. They serve as a very large fundraisers, fundraisers for organizations in our community, many of which are tied to schools. Banning the sale of fireworks would hurt our children. We are a Title I and underfunded school community, and if we lose this fundraiser, our children will lose. Not only the extracurricular activities, but life experience. Then I think there was some emails. From the Palmdale Elks Lodge. The impact, the impact of not being able to sell safe and sane fireworks would greatly affect the local community. We support local schools with Rib- Ribbon Week, Backpack for Families in Need, a special needs Christmas party for disabled children. Help with the paying for shoes and uniforms for school sports teams, among other activities we help out with. I would ask the Council why they are targeting safe and sane fireworks. Ask them what they are doing to combat the sale of illegal fireworks in Palmdale, which is the real problem. Getting rid of safe and sane fireworks isn't going to have an effect on the number of illegal fireworks that are going on everywhere in Palmdale on the fourth and leading up to holiday. Roberto Munoz. Uh, the next one.
I think that, is this the one from Hayes?
No.
I think they hit both sides here, by the way.
Uh. Okay, yes, this is, do, do you not want me to read it? This is the email.
Yeah, I, I think it says pretty much the same thing that the comment did there earlier, so.
Okay, uh.
Just for the record, we got an, an email and.
This one's from Chris Boswick, Vice President, Palmdale Repertory Theater. Good afternoon. I'm part of a nonprofit organization that has sold safe and sane fireworks for over twenty years. Palmdale Repertory Theater needs the sale of fireworks in order for our organization to stay lucid. The sale of fireworks is our yearly fundraiser that gives us the funds to produce our theore- uh, theoretical shows. I believe the sale of legal fireworks is a fun and safe way for Palmdale residents to celebrate the fourth of July. Please consider continuing to allow organizations like Palmdale Repertory Theater to continue this fundraiser. From um. GL Alley. Before you attempt to ban safe and sane fireworks, there needs to be better effort to enforce the laws against using and selling illegal fireworks. The illegal aerial fireworks problem continues to get worse. Safe and sane fireworks are very different from those more dangerous fireworks. What the legions are selling are legal, state-approved fireworks that allow families to celebrate the fourth of July at their homes with family and friends. Safe and sane fireworks are sparks and noise, and illegal fireworks are the items that go in the air and explode. Be healthy, prosperous, and wise.
Thank you. Alright, so um. I've got a, I've got a couple of questions here, maybe you can help me with this. First of all, um, I think it's important for the public to know, uh, that everybody's telling us. You know, we need to cite and find these guys, but we keep hearing from you guys and from hearing officers and. And just general conversation, and a lot of these are getting reduced. I've seen some cities that have reduced the fines, and they're being upheld and not being appealed to Superior Court. Have we looked at what the impact of that is? Or have we thought about having our staff and the city attorney speaking to the supervising judge? To explain to them why that this is a. Why we're doing this? Why we're doing this. It's not a matter of that we're trying to be mercenary about it. It's just, it's, it's a significant impact and a, and a deterrence, you know, cause I tell you. I know a couple of neighbors that got caught with, with a bout, with a, one guy a bottle rocket, another guy with a, um. Roman candle. I haven't played with fireworks since that, you know, so. But what, what's the, um, it, so it's a multi-part question there.
It is, um, some of the other cities, I spoke to Victorville specifically, they had a very high success rate this year. They actually issued a hundred and eighty-two citations. Um, talking to their code enforcement manager, they are faced with the same struggles we are. Their bail amount is one thousand for the first offense, two thousand, and then three thousand, um. He said it had, they've only implemented this program for the last three years. And he said with that bail amount, it hasn't made a significant impact or decrease on the activity that goes on. We've kept ours at twenty-five hundred for the deterrent factor. We have not had a conversation with the judge regarding. His decisions on reducing those.
We have or we have not?
We have not.
So, do you think that that might be a good approach to go speak to the supervising, uh, judge for the, uh, district?
Sorry, I can tell you, we, uh, that's an option. Not only, I mean, I appreciate Cyrus' presentation. You know, I see the captain in the back. Not only do we change things up this year, I would tell you that. Uh, immediately after the Fourth of July, uh, the two teams got together and had an after-action debrief about. Okay, what worked? What do we try differently that worked well? Uh, if next month was Fourth of July again, what would we want to do different? So I think we have a good approach going into next year, but that's something that we could add to that. I would think we have to go through the city attorney, you know, it's an elected official, so the judge, so. Uh, but I'd be happy to, if, uh, the city attorney's office could coordinate a, a sit-down.
Well, we could have elected official, elected official discussion too, you know, so. But I, I, that's what I was thinking, that if the supervising judge is made aware, they may not even know what's going on down below there, you know? At the, at the local level and what the, what the thought process is. And, you know, I, I tell you what, if we put the word out to the community that we need letters to support upholding these fines. I think we could easily be overwhelmed with letters and emails on the topic, you know, so.
We could add that to the list of things we'll, uh, attempt to do.
And, um, I, I'm trying to decipher some of the charts.
Okay, absolutely.
And, um, so I'm gonna start at the back and move my way back forward here, um. So I s- I s- I have to get it set up, sorry. So I'm looking at these and, and like in twenty nineteen, um, there was, we're a hundred and. So I saw revenue lost to the city was twenty thousand, but the, the, but the fireworks citation was a hundred and thirty-one. And if they, I, what, what, explain to me what we're reading in that, what we're seeing in that, because I'm, I'm going across the line and math isn't working for me.
Is this the?
So I'm just looking at twenty nineteen because the, the outstanding bail amount was a hundred and thirty-one. Is that just because they're making payments or is that?
That's the total from the amount of citations that were issued, if that dollar amount were to be collected, that's what the revenue would be. So we issue the citations, the citations have been upheld, that amount is owed to the city. But the, there's a small percentage of people who come in and actually pay for their citations.
Pay what?
Pay for their citations.
Right. So we've co- we, we collected thirty on that, we're still owed over a hundred thousand. And then what's the, wh- what is the significance of the, of the twenty on that?
The twenty thousand, that's the revenue that's lost due to the judges dismissing them or reducing the bail amount. If they don't find in our favor or if they reduce the two thousand five hundred down to a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars. Or five hundred dollars, whatever he reduces it to.
So what we're saying, what we're seeing right now is that had the judge not reduced that. We would have fifty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
We'd have a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Oh, okay, so that, so that's off the, the red column then?
Correct. It would be added to the amount that is outstanding to be collected, had they not reduced the bail amount.
They, and, be, now see, this is where numbers mean a difference here. That's twice the amount of what we paid for sheriff's deputies overtime this year. So that judge reduced to one-third the number of deputies that we have out there to enforce this. And the public needs to understand that.
I will say one thing for the sheriff's department, we have ten thousand is what's been billed so far. We haven't been billed for January. So by the time that's done, it'll be the average of the, the previous years, which is about twenty-two thousand. So that ten thousand is still.
That, that number just annoys me to no end, um. So we, so we got, um, we only confiscated five hundred and twenty-six pounds this year. But it was mostly from like online sales and stuff like that?
It was a combination of online sales and when the deputies in code enforcement respond to a house that's lighting the fireworks. It's very typical for the homeowners to grab their stash and run inside. So we don't have access unless they willingly bring that back out for us to collect. So that's what we're able to collect that's still out in the driveway and the sidewalk by the time we are able to respond. So it's a little bit of those leftovers and it's the sales from internet sales and whatnot.
I can tell you that there's, you got that much sitting in some guy's trunk.
Well, yeah, and that's the previous year, we had a significant amount and that's exactly what we came across. We had one person who we met in the parking lot who had a small amount in their truck. But the deputies were able to say, we want more, where's the rest of this? Took them to their house and they had floor to ceiling, wall to wall, and that's why there's a significant difference from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
This only reflects code enforcement's efforts here?
No, that's code enforcement and sheriff's department combined.
I remember last year when, when you guys had that big bust of fireworks, there was a huge pile outside by the.
There was.
So I, I, I can tell you that there used to be, uh, the way the state fire marshal had done this. Because we had a lot of discussion about this at the state. I go, have, had this discussion with the state fire marshal's office since back when Gahalva was back there, okay? And they systematically reduced the budget for the state fire marshal investigators. We need to get the state to, uh, rean- you know, uh, um, reinstitute their, their practice. Because I, I know that some of the inland empire, um, agencies, they tried to augment it. But they, you know, the, uh, the, the cities were paying for, um, you know, their inspe- their inspectors. And their investigators work overtime to, and they would sit at the, uh, agricultural inspection station. And then try to look at the cars and catch them that way. Um, it, it just was not nearly as effective because the state used to have these guys go out to the fireworks. Warehouses, watch for vehicles, U-Haul trucks, box trucks pulling up in there with California plates. Get out and head west, and they would call it ahead, and that's how they would, that's how they would bust them. Uh, you know, it's, um, uh, it's like finding a needle in a haystack if you're, you know. And if you don't interdict this stuff, and let's be clear about this. This is the wholesale smuggling of contraband across state lines. There really should be a more significant penalty for smuggling contraband across state lines. I don't know where that lies and in whose wheelhouse that's gotta go to, but it, we really have to do that. And the volume in here, uh, that gets confiscated, I know if it's enough, we can get ATF involved. Because it becomes, you know, uh, uh, possession of a dangerous amount of, of, of explosives, so. I think, I think we absolutely positively have to, um, get to our state legislators. We have to get to the, to the judge on, on, on these fines and, um, the, uh. It, it, i- if we don't, I mean, the public is, is really upset about this. Cause this, this started in March, okay, and it's still going on, you know, so, uh, I, I, uh. So, and, and the one more thing that we have to do is, I know the, um, the captain. Cause I was getting a lot of people were sending me and I'm sure you guys were getting the pictures, people were sending you of the, uh, online sales to forward over. Um, we gotta get a, uh, we, we, we gotta have the IT guys figure out how to keep that email working. Uh, because I know sometimes it will go into that box and it get forwarded out. Trouble is, is that the resident was getting a bo- a, a, um, a bounced email message. And then they were getting really upset about that, you know, and they'd have to explain that to them. So if we could clean that up, make, make a, um, make an easy process for them to do these. I know we, I know our, um, it's not my waste anymore, it's whatever that recycle thing that we've got. That app has it on there as well, but I, I don't know, I mean, you know, I didn't even know the name of the app until this afternoon, so. Um, so I, I, those are the things that I'm, that I'm seeing right now that have got to get addressed, you know.
To, to expand on that, I, uh, what you just said last. Um, you know, all of these statistics and the explanation as to what the cost is. Um, associated with the resources, limited resources that we have in code enforcement and the sheriff's department. But I think that, uh, I, I want to address the real concern as to why we get these emails. And phone calls from March to August and whatever that time is. And I think it is because the residents are frustrated that they feel ignored. Um, you know, I, I personally, if I call up an area number to report something and I'm gonna talk to a machine and it never gets back to me. That's even more frustrating. So I, I think that what we need to, um, consider in the future years is to have more staff. I know, I know it's resources, I know it's all about money and this doesn't help that the citations that are issued, we never collect that money. But I get those calls and emails and on Facebook, you know, blaming us for not doing anything about it. And it is the frustration of being ignored. Because the system that you just said, the email goes somewhere else and then nobody gets back to them. That is the frustration and that's why we get blamed, the elected officials. For not being responsive to our constituents' concerns. They are legitimate concerns. It is not the safe and saints fireworks that are the problem, it is the illegal ones, we all know that. What w- we need to do a better job at is to have the resources to listen to the, those frustrated residents. Because their dogs are going crazy, their little kids are going crazy, all hours of the night. So in order for us to be more responsive as elected officials, I believe, is that we need to provide the additional resources. To be able to listen to what they have to say. I know the sheriff's department is bombarded with calls. I know code enforcement is bombarded with calls and all staff and everybody is. But again, if I'm gonna call to, um, bring something up and I know you're not gonna call me back, I'm gonna take it on ours, guys.
Yeah, that's, that's a call I get is, is that, well, as soon as I said the word fireworks, they said, hold the line. And then, you know, that was the last thing I heard. So I, I think that a simple triage, and it's something I talk with Mike and the guys about, is if it's a fireworks call. You know, it's a fireworks on line one and then maybe, maybe a, a civilian volunteer, a VOP, something like that. One of our, uh, public security officers, somebody, it's not that hard to train them to fill in a couple of blanks. But then you're talking to somebody and that's the frustration that I've heard, that same one that you had, you're getting. Uh, compounded with, I sat on there all night waiting and, uh, and, and, and I get it that. You know, I, I, I've been in, I've been in that seat, I get what the, what the call takers and the dispatchers are going through. But I know several years ago, we had some of our staff taking the calls over the, over the command post. I don't know whether we wanna, if that's the way to do it, if we want to embed somebody over at the call taker's desk at, on these fireworks calls. They get it, they, they'll fill out a sheet, and then if nothing else, you know, somebody just to follow up with the guy, you know? Uh, uh, the, the vicinity calls are frustrating, cause the public says, how am I supposed to know where it is? Trust me, I mean, you know, after you get about five or six calls at the, at Tenth and Main, it is probably something around Tenth and Main. But if that person gets a, a call back and, you know, what, do you suspect a particular address? Cause I know you guys have gone out and, and knocked on the door and said, listen, we've gotten about twelve calls for this address. We want you to know that we've gotten twelve calls at this address and it's not gonna go well if there's a problem here.
So a couple more things, um. I, I wanna put the peace of mind to the, uh, nonprofit organizations that, um, depend on this to help their. Um, charities and, uh, what they do. I personally, I'm not targeting those groups that sell safe and sane fireworks. And those, that's what some of the comments are, that they think that we are going to.
Well, they were looking at what the, your thing was really put on the agenda.
So that, that's not, that's not my intent. I support their causes. I support what they do because it's something that the community enjoys. It's an American pride, yes. We, we all can agree on that. You know, and the, the safe and sane fireworks are that, that, that gives us the venue or the avenue to express our patriotism. Going to a fireworks show, that's different, that's controlled, that's great. Um, so I am not for taking your fireworks away the safe and sane. Because that was voted by the residents of the city to be allowed to be sold in Palmdale. And I'm getting those calls, in fact, I, I got a call on Sunday about this item. And the misconception there is that we, the council, are gonna take away safe and sane fireworks. We cannot do that. You, the voters, can do that. You can, you wanna put a ballot on it, you can do that. We don't have the authority to do that, if I'm correct, and if I'm making a.
I think that that was the question when this came up a couple of months ago, is how do we put this back on the ballot? I don't, I don't wanna put it back on the ballot. Question's been asked and answered in my mind.
So I have a, um, proposition that could address this issue. Uh, I know the city, uh, is acquiring, already acquired a drone. I don't know the complications, I don't know the legal issues, but if the drone is, is already in our hands, can we use a drone at night to fly it? Take a picture or video of where that is being deployed, that illegal firework. That way the sheriff's department's gonna have to respond right away. If there's a drone out there looking out for these illegal activities, and if the people know that that's out there and that they're gonna get caught. I mean, again, I don't know what the implications are, that's.
There, there, there's some really, really strict rules regarding, and, and it's very expensive to make.
How strict are they and can we look into it?
Yeah, yeah, you can look into it, um, it, it goes, i- if, if you wanna look at the challenges that the surveillance plan in Lancaster has had. So it would, it would be very expensive for the city. But I've been racking my brain about this, about, because, you know, we, we, especially on the east side, I don't, I don't, that's where we live and so. It, we're, we're still having fireworks on the east side, it's, it's. Um, and so I've really been racking my brain, you know, what can we do? How do we, how do we, how do we curb this? And like the mayor said, it's people going out to other places and buying the stuff and, um, and I thought about illegal versus legal. And I actually spoke with some of our deputies today saying, hey, you know, you've worked both stations, Lancaster, Palmdale. Who has the bigger problem? Do we have more problem here in the city because we have the legal fireworks? They said, no, absolutely not. Lancaster has just as many problems as Palmdale, um, and they don't even sell the, the legal fireworks. So the legal fireworks don't really impact the, the purchasing, um, or, or the change of behavior. But my question is this, if we could stop them from buying the illegal fireworks. Okay, I'm, I know you guys aren't gonna like this, the public may not like this, but what if we let people buy the legal fireworks earlier? To stop them from going out of state and buying the illegal fireworks? What do you think?
Yeah, I think, well, I tell you what, though, uh, I think you could get just as much pushback from the groups. I mean, seriously, there's some cities that only do it for five days now, because.
We know the pattern of behavior of our residents, that these things are going off two weeks before the Fourth of July. If we give people the opportunity to buy the legal stuff, then maybe they wouldn't buy so much of the illegal. Does that make sense? Cause they're, they're, this, this, the city's blowing up before we even open the booths.
I have a sense that the people that are buying, um, the legal safe and sane fireworks. Are not the people that are buying all the illegal stuff. Or there may be some crossover, but I think the majority that are buying the illegal are going to Nevada or, or Mexico. And buying the stuff across the border and bringing it back, and I don't think they're spending, you know, a couple hundred dollars on the safe and sane stuff. Especially when a lot of the, um, illegal fireworks in Nevada, as I understand it, is extraordinarily cheap. It might be cheaper to buy illegal fireworks than to buy the safe and sane stuff.
Yeah, but I.
More bang for your buck.
I, I, I'm totally, I, I would, I would wonder if we could do the social experiment and try it here. Open it up a week earlier, it would help the nonprofits get more money, right? It will give people an opportunity to buy stuff instead of having to, to go out of town to buy it, and I wanna, I wanna, you know. I wanna believe that some people are just too freaking lazy to drive out of town to get it, if they can buy it here.
I think haven't, haven't done it for a lot of years before we ran into some snags, uh, and staffing issues and. Franchise tax board, God bless them, um, the, uh, for the most part. The uh, for the most part, what, what the groups find is the neighborhood. And, and, and the stuff is not, somebody doesn't s- um, shop, you know, across town. They, they're buying it from the, from the, within a radius of, of the booth. And there's X amount of sales that go down around that booth and, and, and um. You, you could see the exact, the, the, the precise impact of that when another booth went in up the street. And all of a sudden, between the two of them, it was pretty much the same amount that the one booth used to sell. And I talked with um, trying to remember if it was Duarte? One of, one of the cities down the San Gabriel area that went from seven days down to five days. And the booths were making the same amount, so that's sort of like, it's like. Water in a fountain is gonna be at a certain level and that's where it's gonna be.
My brain's trying to find a way to stop them, combine them in the first place, so.
I think you gotta get the state fire marshal investigators out there and bust these trucks coming in, you know.
So here's another thought, I'm trying to find a solution. Is it the same um, complications with the drone as it is putting cameras on the streetlights?
It, it depends, and, and I don't wanna speak out of my uh, role, role of authority up here, but. There's a big difference between whether something's being done criminally or civilly. And, and what the Attorney General's Office requires from a criminal, uh, criminal justice agency for maintaining. Video, pictures, evidence, that type of thing, as opposed to somebody that would do it civilly. So you have, you would have to um, you'd have to work that out. Plus, there's a big difference between flying over somebody's house into their personal space or having a camera pointed in a public space.
Put it onto the street, so that, that's where the theory happens.
You have to be very careful and, and, and Captain, stop me when I, when I'm going across the line here, so, alright.
Did, did you get any feedback from, a couple of cities were doing bounties. I think Santa Clarita and Lancaster had a bounty if you were turning in uh, somebody with illegal fireworks. From the other cities I've talked to previously to this year, they said, yeah, we handed out a couple of those, no, no significant increase in numbers. Have you had any other feedback on that?
No, I, I don't, I can look into it further, but I don't have.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't heard a lot of, you know, the, the bounty hasn't, you know, hasn't like added a lot to the uh, to the, to the plate here.
The, the point I'd like to make is that um, the city of Los Angeles made national news on the Fourth of July. Because of the fireworks that were going on across the entire city. And it wasn't just the Fourth, it was for days leading up to the Fourth and for days after the Fourth. And we had a similar fireworks show out here too, nothing compared to LA. And in LA, it's complete, safe and sane are completely illegal. Nobody sells safe and sane in any part of Los Angeles. And I think there's a big disconnect, there's people who think that the safe and sane fireworks promotes the illegal fireworks. And that's, it's just not true. I mean, if you just look at the experience from Los Angeles. And um, I think that the, almost all of the comments, if not all of the comments, are in favor of keeping safe and sane. Because it helps those organizations for very good causes. Now, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, the booths keep going down. And um, I'm just wondering why that is. I mean, why is it that in sixteen there were forty-seven and twenty now there's only thirty-nine? When we have a capacity of fifty-two, I think, is the maximum. What, do, do we know why that's happening?
I don't know why that's happened and I don't believe it's, the city has denied them. They are not coming forward, I don't know if those organizations are still operational, I don't know what those citizens are.
And you know, I think that you, you can expect even less next year because the um, new resolution that we adopted. Now, I believe that with a new resolution, uh, staff is gonna have to make sure that fifty percent of their members live in the city.
Well, always was the deal, but.
Right, but, but that, that's the reason why, um, because, you know, back then there were. Different, the, the resolution has different qualifications to be a nonprofit. I, I know because my son played soccer and that was one of the reasons why they found out. That they were not based off of Palmdale, that the majority of the members live in Lancaster. So staff looked at it closer and started looking at the membership of those groups. Uh, I believe that's the reason why, but again, with the recently uh, resolution that we adopted, I can see numbers dropping even further.
I know, I would, I would venture to say, and I, I can make the phone call uh, tomorrow to uh, the um. To TNT or something, I would bet that the, like we said, you, you know, you absorb it, it comes to the, it comes, there's a level that it comes to. Uh, I would bet that the overall gross sales were probably very similar to what they were when you had forty-six or forty-seven booths.
Well, but you know, there's a correlation, when the economy is good, people are gonna spend money. I mean, if you look at two thousand eighteen and sixteen.
Sold out.
I mean, today, this year, with COVID, people being stuck at home, they saved a little bit of money, what did we experience? I, I believe that it was much, much louder, much, much longer than previous years.
Sarah, can I ask you a question? How difficult would it be to reach out to some of the booths from previous years and find out why they didn't try to get a booth this year? Could we, do we, I, I know that might be a lot of work, I, I don't know how, how much effort that would take, but I would be curious.
Just, just call uh, Phantom, I don't know the guys there over there, or call Brad or John Kelly at TNT. They can probably tell you, but I can tell you from our meeting at the Elks Lodge when, you know, we, we had booths that, that told us this is the last year we're doing it. Cuz it's the same five people that are working it every year and their kids have gotten older. I know at, 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 at our booth, it was the alumni uh, that, that were, that were working the booth. And they were, you know, there were, there were a lot, there were quite a few days where we didn't open up until later. Cuz we didn't have somebody to, to, to um, to help in the booth and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, I can see during COVID that people wouldn't wanna be in.
So same people doing it, same guys selling, you know, Girl Scout cookies or.
One thing I take away from this, especially with all these letters from uh, the nonprofits and organizations, is that. Um, they definitely need fun, funding and, and when this holiday comes around, it's a big deal for them, so. I'd like to s- I'd like to see if we could do anything as far as creating additional ways to create. Uh, fundraisers or opportunities for these uh, organizations to raise more money throughout the year. Because it's, it's clear that they, they need it. And uh, if we had some other stuff planned throughout the year for them to sign up for similar to this, it would be a huge relief.
Like at some of our events and things like that.
Yeah, for some of our events, because it's the one thing I, I read over and over is, you know, they wait all year for this one thing.
Well, I don't, I think so, in some cases, it's not a matter of, we waited all year for this. It's, we're gonna concentrate our efforts, uh, again, it's the bang for the buck. You know, in one week, they can make the, the majority of their budget, you know?
Yeah, trust me, as a Girl Scout leader, if, if we had been allowed through the council to have a booth, I would have loved it. Because we could have made two years' worth of money in one week, but the scouts prohibit it, you're not allowed to do it, so we were never able to do it.
But you could, you could have a um, you know, like, Saint Mary's can have the booth and give the money to the scouts.
So, you know, different organizations need, need different levels of funding, so looking at how some of the numbers went down or they fluctuate. Maybe there's some organizations and, and groups that can't no longer afford or, or do the safe and sane fireworks. Maybe they need another outlet, I saw Mike was taking notes about that, so. Thank you, so maybe that's something we can look into is getting them an additional outlet to raise some funds for their community.
It's funny you bring that up, counselor, cuz we have uh, added about thirty groups to help us with our census outreach.
Oh, good.
And let them have, use that as a fundraiser.
Okay, great.
So, and we're gonna continue to look for opportunities to partner with communities, I, you know, our staff, our Parks and Rec staff. There were a lot of youth sports programs who collected the money to start baseball season or soccer season. And then COVID hit and parents needed that money back. The organizations went out and bought the bats and balls or uniforms or soccer and then they can't play, parents want the money back. These leagues spent the money, so that's why we've been reaching out. And so, we're, we're in touch with about thirty organizations uh, to help us with census. Under our Palmdale Cares Initiative, we, this council is approved, pushing out over two million dollars of, of help for. Groups and individuals and small businesses, so.
Yeah, our cares, our cares uh, funding is, is spectacular, that, maybe we could uh, make sure we reach out to all the groups that have done. Uh, fireworks in the past to make sure that they have a chance to be involved in this.
And any group who wants to help us with the census, get in touch with me, uh, jjmurphy@citypalmdale.org, even better. And Lopez@citypalmdale.org.
So can we, can we put something together that we can send off to our state legislators and to the state fire marshal? To encourage it, you know, because it, uh, it, it's made, it, it's been in the Sacramento Bee. It's been in San Diego Union Trib- Tribune, it's been in the Mercury News, it's not just in the Animal Valley Press. Everybody's having this problem and I think it even hit the Wall Street Journal. So I think we need to, uh, you know, the, the state is always trying to push stuff back down on the local governments. This is a classic case, you got a problem with fireworks, you handle it. And I think we need to push this back up, so can we prepare something and then send it off to these guys and say, hey, this is.
I'll get with the, the Chief of Staff to, to write a letter and I, I think there's a lot of you on the board of League of Cities. I think that's how you have to work this legislation and, and call the, you know, our state elected officials and, but yeah, we'll, we'll get.
We can, and that could be something we can add into the uh, we just got the agendas today coming up, so we'll uh, we'll ta- we'll take a look at um. Adding that on, because, you know, there, there's a lot of different committees and stuff that uh. May have the ability to advance that, but we get something in writing, we can take that up, we can take it to the league board, things of that nature. I think we need to set that appointment up or get that message over to supervising judge on this thing.
The other statistic that uh, jumped out at me is the one for calls for service related fireworks. In twenty twenty and everyone, I think, knows just by looking around. How extensive the illegal fireworks were going on everywhere, I mean, it's just incredible this year. Nothing compared to LA, but if we had a pretty substantial show as well. And yet, uh, six hundred and seventy pounds were confiscated in twenty twenty. But the fires were only five, quite a bit down from twenty eighteen. And um, I, I'd be interested, I don't know whether we can ever find out why, but. Uh, you know, with all that illegal fireworks going on, there, there were just not that many fires, don't know why.
I just wanna jump in, cuz I'm actually doing a review of our arson cases for our commander's meeting. And a lot of our fires are undetermined, doesn't mean they weren't fireworks, just means that they were not able to officially determine the cause. So that may have um, affected the, the number count, what you can prove and what you can't prove are two different things.
Eighteen fires on the. There were eighteen fires total on the Fourth of July, it's thirteen that are unaccounted for.
But I think, I think that there was um, a lot of fires that weren't counted, that were outside that um, that window. So, I think um, we actually, can, can, can I speak on this, Captain? We had twenty-two arson cases since the first of the year, official arsons that were documented as arsons. But we've had multiple um, non-criminal fires that were undetermined causes in, in various ways, like houses, cars, fields. Um, so it could be a statting issue as to what happened during a particular window and with, with us out here. I think we'll all agree that this was a bad year, that these illegal fireworks started way before the week of Fourth of July. It met, met, maybe even a month before, so we're not capturing those fires that fired at it in these stats here. We're just capturing a particular window when we're talking about these stats.
I think, I think in general, when there's fireworks going off and big red and the black and white shows up. You're gonna have five or six neighbors going over, the damn kids are playing with fireworks out there, so I, you know. I, I, I think that people are, people are pretty vocal to let, to, to let the, you know. The fire and the sheriff guys know that, hey, that was, those guys were shooting bottle rockets off or something like that, so. It always leaves something behind, you know, always leaves something. So something else that we wanna have staff do right now, I'm getting the sense that we don't wanna go after the um, especially with the, the feedback we've gotten here. There's not, there's no appetite to be pursuing that, correct?
The safe and sane, you're right.
Oh, no, I, I'm, I would rather expand it a week earlier, give them two weeks instead of one week.
Alright, well, I don't, I'll, I'll bet you they won't support that, that's another week of sitting out, the dust and the dirt and the heat.
If they don't have legal ones to buy, they are going to buy the illegal ones, it's, it's human nature. If you don't, if, they're gonna get what they want one way or the other and if they can't get the legal, they'll buy the illegal. You don't need more of that.
We can check with, with the fireworks guys, but I um, I, I, I think I anticipate what the consensus will be on that. Any other particular um, thoughts on this? Uh, I think the, being able to staff up the phones and then return phone call. I mean, even if the person has to leave a voicemail message, that's a lot better than just getting stuck on hold. Everybody's used to, you know, push one, you know, to talk to this guy, two to talk to that guy, three to listen to music until you die. Everybody's used to that process, you know, so I mean, if they, I think that would be better than just sitting on hold, you know. So I, can we explore some options?
Absolutely.
Uh, on that and also for the follow-up calls. I think that if somebody just hears, hey, we, the guys went out there, they drove by, undercover drove by, you know, we, we didn't see it, you know, but. Admittedly, it was a couple hours later and he might have stopped, but I think just getting that phone call.
Right, but Sarah, also, we wanna remind the public that those people that wanna remain completely anonymous and are afraid to make a phone call. That they can still use the anonymous phone chip to send the information in, cuz a lot of people don't wanna call. They wanna be as, as anonymous as possible, so they can still use the rechip and that will get filtered to our station.
You know, in the fines, um, is there a penalty assessment that's added on top of the fine?
Absolutely.
There is, okay, so, because many times that's like three or four times what the base fee, uh, fine is. So maybe that's what the judges are looking at, I mean, there, there may be a two hundred dollar fine. But by the time you add the penalty assessments, it's almost up to two thousand dollars.
But that doesn't happen here, though, if they pay it, right, to our hearing office, it's only if they go to court.
If they, the administrative citations, that entire bail amount stays here, so we do not re-aborate that to the county.
Right, but the bigger cases, they go to the Superior Court.
Even those, that revenue stays here on an admin site, I'm not quite sure how or why, I need to look into that.
Just wondering if the judge is reducing it is because he's thinking of the impact of the penalty assessments, I, I mean, I don't know if they charge penalty assessment on fireworks.
No, I'm sorry, only late fees, so there's no penalty assessments, other than late fees if they're not paid on time. And by the time they go to the Superior Court, it's still the original bail amount.
I see.
Maybe you can work with the city attorney's office and we can at least have the dialogue with the supervising judge. And, and maybe we can find out what the thought process is, other than they just think it's exorbitant. I think if, we need to sit down and show our case and, and, and look at it, they say, listen. I would uphold every one of those if they were seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, then we, then we lower it to seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, you know? But um, I, I get where, I've heard that before from other areas. And, and like I said, I don't remember the city, but one of them just dropped theirs down to five hundred bucks and I don't think they're getting quite as much pushback. Any other thoughts for that, or are we ready to move on? Everybody, you good?
Can we just take a quick break?
Yeah, I would suggest that, yeah, we'll take a quick break and then we'll go on to.
Almost.
Yeah. Be patient.
And, uh. Ma'am, it's all yours.
Mayor and Council, June two thousand eighteen Neighborhood Services presented the City of Palmdale's homeless plan. Today, we are reporting the efforts and accomplishments by the city and our partners for the period June two thousand eighteen through June two thousand twenty. The annual homeless count is coordinated by Los Angeles County Homeless Services Authority. For service planning area one, there was an increase between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty in the count of homeless individuals. Palmdale's count was at two hundred fifteen in two thousand eighteen, three hundred eighteen in two thousand nineteen, and decreased in two thousand twenty to two hundred eighty-nine. The city's plan has four goals for addressing homelessness: prevention, assisting eligible individuals and families with relevant information and create housing opportunities; empower local service providers, community partners, and those with an invested interest in improving their response and developing an approach to track progress. The programs and actions by the city and their partners may each address multiple goals. In implementing the homeless plan, the city's actions include providing a process to identify the extent of homeless individuals and families in the city and their needs; seeking regional and local funding to help local community partners serve the homeless and those at risk; and improving coordination among community partners when addressing needs of homeless individuals and families. City staff and regional and community partners each provide different services, and when communicating with individuals through outreach or because they have reached out to our partners, they provide information for resources for the individuals to seek assistance from one or more appropriate service providers and may reach out to our partners to facilitate connecting the individuals to services. The city and Housing Authority work with developer partners to increase the available affordable transitional and rental housing in Palmdale and also to provide opportunities for homeownership. During the period of this report, one hundred seventy-five units of affordable rental housing became available, with sixty-four units for households experiencing homelessness, including units specifically for veterans. In addition, Homes for Families and Palmdale's Housing Authority has qualified twenty-four veteran households for homeownership of affordable units, with the first base currently under construction. Meta Housing anticipates Juniper Grove, a planned affordable housing development with permanent supportive housing units, to have construction underway by mid-October two thousand twenty. These projects have many funding sources from the federal, state, county, and city, tax credit investors, bonds, and private lenders. Funding for these projects include Palmdale Housing Authority providing loans totaling over twelve million dollars for construction of rehabilitation and fifty-five-year capitalized leases. Also, the city invested the Home Investment Partnership Program funds and CDBG grants. Um, the state, Veterans Housing and Homeless Prevention Program, funding about five million, No Place Like Home funds of five million, and Measure H funds of three million dollars. The Community Programs Division administers three programs: Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, known as TIBR, Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing, or HPRP, and South Antelope Valley Emergency Services, known as SAVES. The TIBR's program's goal is prevention, assisting up to thirty-four senior households each year whose housing cost is more than fifty percent of their gross income. The HPRP program assists both eligible residents in need of short-term assistance to retain their housing and also provides assistance to rehouse households who are experiencing homelessness. Twenty-six households have been assisted by this program during the reporting period. The third program is SAVES, over the last two years providing food, motel vouchers, and through flexible office space, access to services from the city's community partners, including, um, the Salvation Army, Mental Health America, Housing Rights Center, Neighborhood Legal Services, Bart's Altadena, and the outreach teams. During the reporting period, June two thousand eighteen through February two thousand twenty, SAVES assisted with over forty-one thousand food orders for over fifty-four hundred individuals. During the three-month period, March to June two thousand twenty, SAVES adapted to the increase in need due to the pandemic, and seventeen thousand two hundred seventy-one food boxes were provided to over fourteen thousand six hundred individuals. The Community Programs Division is responsive to the pandemic and the recent increase in residents experiencing challenges brought by it. Their programs, TIBR, HPRP, and SAVES, are being adjusted and expanded to address these changing needs and the changes and requirements of available funding. The funding for services is provided by Home and CDBG and Palmdale Housing Authority funds. Additional funding has been allocated by HUD for the Home and CDBG programs and the regulations updated to enable flexibility and expedited implementation. Regional partner, Valley Oasis, is the lead for the Antelope Valley Service Planning Area Coordinate Entry System to coordinate outreach and engagement, interviewing and assessing the needs of individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Over sixteen hundred assessments have been completed. Valley Oasis then collaborates with individuals and families to access services provided by the regional and local service providers into secure housing. Services provided by Valley Oasis and their partners include problem solving, free legal assistance, and identifying the different types of housing appropriate for each client. The funding Valley Oasis has received addresses eight strategies identified by the Homeless Initiative to combat homelessness and thirteen programs for specific demographics. Funding includes various types from the county funding, including Measure H, the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, which is known as HEAT, and city home funds. These funds are regulated and programmed specific to the services provided for each type of demographic: families, veteran, transitional age youth, seniors, victims of abuse, and for the type of housing: emergency, bridge, or entry to permanent housing. Also, for outreach and case management. Regional partner, Mental Health America, has two outreach teams who have engaged with over thirty-four hundred individuals. With over eight hundred fifty individuals seeking services, of these assisted, fifty-seven were veterans during the reporting period. Services provided include mental health services, stabilizing housing, employment services, and education. Mental Health America is a partner with Meta Housing and Solari at the Corson Arts Colony. Regional partner, Antelope Valley Partners for Health, has several programs, providing education, case management, and resources to clients who are facing domestic violence, substance abuse, homelessness, and mental illness. AVPH has provided services to one thousand ninety-three unduplicated Palmdale residents through home visitation and food delivery services that address basic needs and supportive services. City partner Victory Outreach has engaged over sixty individuals through various events and outreach efforts. Victory Outreach operates two recovery homes, has rehabilitated a four-unit building that was vacant, and is housing formerly homeless households. Victory provides services including twelve-step programs, GED classes, and job skill training. It also reaches out to the community, providing back-to-school backpacks, reinforcing the importance of education and events that assist residents to meet their neighbors and further strengthen the community. City partner, Advancing Communities Together, known as ACT, provides affordable housing and education. Through the Palmdale Dream Center, affordable transitional housing is provided for adults eighteen to twenty-five years. Through collaboration with service providers, supportive services and life skills training is provided. Six additional units of affordable housing are provided at their two affordable housing properties also. With an average length of residency of twelve to twenty-four months, each year, over forty-seven individuals have been housed in ACT's transitional housing. Through ACT's Youth Build Program, their charter school, in collaboration with our partners, students receive their education, earning their high school diploma and also receive skills training for leadership and through multi-craft core curriculum, partnerships with the Ironworkers Union and the City of Palmdale, receiving job skills including construction. In addition, the facility housed a winter shelter during the reporting period. Palmdale's Housing Authority provides funding to develop and rehabilitate properties for affordable housing in Palmdale's Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. The Housing Authority has seven affordable housing properties, and management assists the housing locators from our partners who are seeking to identify available units. If they're available, we assist with providing and helping them to secure permanent housing for their clients. Being placed into permanent housing units, receiving the support and assistance from our partners through the assessment and case management process for our residents, we have seen the positive results from the emotional and financial stability received by our residents who receive these wraparound services. Immediate housing for the individuals seeking assistance may be found through the winter shelter located at the Youth Build Charter School. The shelter was operated by the nonprofits Hope of the Valley last year and Volunteers of America in the current year. In two thousand twenty, the shelter has operated continuously beyond the normal winter season. A safe parking program has also been implemented this year, operated by Hope of the Valley, with five cars served. Both sites are also receiving handwashing stations through the COVID grant received by the city from Los Angeles County Homeless Executive Office funded by Measure H funds. Our partners also collaborate to provide homeless connect days. Located at different sites each month, the partners provide information, resources, and services, and a small amount of basic food supplies. Participating agencies include Valley Oasis, SAVES, AVPH, the County Department of Health Services, Mental Health America, outreach teams, and many others. Another collaboration is Valley Oasis and Northrop Grumman's Taking Flight Program, identifying eligible homeless veterans to receive transitional housing, support services, training, and a job when the training is completed. The city and its regional partners are now are looking to what's next, and we will continue to support and to collaborate to identify changing needs and provide services accordingly. The city is currently planning a navigation center to provide a one-stop location for services and emergency housing. Through an innovation grant received by the city from the Los Angeles County Homeless Executive Office funded by Measure H funding, a study to plan and design of the requirements will be undertaken. We thank our homeless planning members, highlighted in this report, but also the many small nonprofits providing services throughout our Palmdale community. Staff is available for questions.
That navigation center, is that going to be in conjunction with the, uh, Operation Room Key at the motel on Palmdale Boulevard?
Separate. It's a separate facility that we're looking to put together that would have tenant space for our partners and also housing space for those with special needs, for emergency housing.
But isn't that what they're doing over there at the outbreak? They've got all those other agencies at that facility. Are we duplicating that, or is there something that is, that's missing?
We are not duplicating it. Um, ours is coming in, look, bless you. We're looking to have that in the next couple of years, and right now, Operation Home Key is, actually, Room Key is to house those who are currently homeless, and then Operation Home Key is to take and buy permanent housing for them. So it's, that's helping those who are currently on the street now. We are looking to the future.
Okay.
So have you identified the location for the navigation center? And I would imagine it would be where services are available?
Uh, city acquired, um, land, um, at Ninth Street East and Q six, I believe the other's across the street is.
That's the one, okay.
Yeah, it's vacant land right now.
So does that location work because the services are within this neighborhood? Or what was the thinking process because the city owned the land to build it?
City owns it. It's in, um, an area that's close to where we're having the winter shelter, the safe parking, so where services already are being provided.
Transit's close by.
Transit's close by, bus stations are close by. It's centrally located.
I just want to commend our staff. You guys have done an amazing job. I don't know of any other city that's actually shown a reduction in the homeless count that they've had, so good job to everybody. Um, I, the, the heat that we're having right now is absolutely deadly, especially the people that have, have weak health. I, I hope that we're really out there trying to find the people that are still out in this heat, between the heat and the smoke and everything else. I, I want us to continue to deal with that. I do have a concern, and I, and maybe we can sit and we can find out how we can address it, is the, um, the homeless kids that are having to learn from home. I mean, how, how do homeless kids go back to school? School just started. How, how are they getting their education? Um, that's, that's always been an issue between the, the hotel kids and the homeless kids, and how are the schools and how are we assisting those, those kids in getting a continuing education? So I just want to keep that in mind when we're talking about the homeless, but you guys have done an amazing job and, and kudos to you for all that you do and anything that the council can do to support your efforts. I, I'm here to support that, so thank you.
You know, I was kind of surprised because I asked that question of the school board people, and, uh, you'd be surprised how many of the kids in, you know, in any of your schools are homeless. Now, they may not be living in a, in a tent or in a car, but, um, they're, they're like, they're living in a motel. The whole family's living in a motel room, you know? So, um.
Especially now where they're having to learn from home, everything is just, just learning.
If they don't have, if the, if the facility doesn't have the, the Wi-Fi, they, uh, I know the school board, uh, provided the Chromebooks and they have the hotspots for them, you know? So I think that that's just, uh, I, I think they're, they're working really hard. Uh, I spent some time with a couple of the board members recently. I think they're, they're really working hard to make, to try to make this thing work, you know, for the kids. The, uh, the sad thing is, for a lot of these kids, school was their safe place.
That's exactly my point.
That's a sad thing.
Yeah.
Well, I too want to thank staff for the hard work in bridging the partnerships and, uh, with, uh, did we get a public comment? Okay. With everything they've done to help, uh, help make this, uh, problem, uh, better, uh, when you, uh, I've been doing some research. When you look at the United States Inter-Agency Councils on, Council on Homelessness, we have been doing a lot of the, uh, things that they've recommended as far as, uh, strengthening crisis response systems, building partnerships, the different type of housing products, uh, integrated healthcare services, building career pathways, and foster, uh, education connections. Uh, we're, we're marking all the boxes. There is one thing I, I saw there that they talked about that I don't think that we, uh, took a closer look at, was that reducing criminal justice involvement. Um, they say a lot of these, uh, not a lot, but it's a certain percentage of homeless people. It's like a rotating door where they're in and out of the, the jail system, so I think that's something we want to take a look at too, are people that have been, uh, caught in the system and then don't have anywhere to go. There's also those, it's, it's not a one, uh, size fits all, and that's sort of, uh, that's basically what they say, but that's one thing that I think that may have been overlooked here in this report.
I think a lot of them are, I mean, you really got to do something really, really, really bad to end up in jail right now. Uh, and, uh, I know that, um, was this, I've heard numbers float around, like about seventy percent of the homeless, uh, folks out there are veterans. And the encouraging thing is, is that when they do get in the jam, that we have the veterans court that works with them to, so you don't end up getting that, have that monkey on your back because you did something stupid.
Right.
Giving them that extra boost, so.
Yeah, I know our state's more lenient. This is more for the nation, but I know our state's more lenient when it comes to the jail sentences.
So I, I can address some of that, um, Austin, because I do sit on the prison board, and, um, California has one of the best reentry programs of any other state. They work really hard to see that their transition from incarceration to, um, normal life, as you call it, um, that they have a support group that will help them. They put, they allow them housing for a certain amount of time so that they don't become instantly homeless. Um, they try to train them while they're in the system to have, uh, some type of a, a, a skill when they come out. Um, literacy is a big deal, especially at the Lancaster prison. They, they work very, very hard to get the prisoners, um, reading, writing, and educated before they are released.
Right.
So they, they work really hard so that they don't fall into homelessness, because once you fall in, it's hard to get out.
Right, it says it's like a repetitive cycle, they get in and out, so.
I just wanted to let you know that locally, um, our prison works very, very hard, and so do, I think, if we had time in our jails, like, people aren't spending a lot of time in jail right now, but, um, those prob, those programs are really super important so that they don't fall into homelessness.
Maybe that's why it was over, like, if you say we have one of the best reentry programs.
We do, we absolutely do, and then we have replacements like, um, uh, Jenny Hodges, Jenny Hodges' program to help, um, when they get out also, and give them clothing and, and, and give them hope, you know, and.
MC Three program.
And then our, our work source also works to help, to help them get jobs and work, and work, uh, reach out to, um, employers that are willing to take people who have been incarcerated. So it's really a huge community effort out here, um, to, to help them, uh, not be re-attenders and not become homeless. It's, it's, it's a good program. Sure, there's room for improvement, and we're, we're always open to any ideas and suggestions, but the Antelope Valley is pretty blessed to have the programs that they do, so.
Yeah, no, we got a lot of.
That's probably the reason our, our homeless rate is so low.
We got a lot of partnerships and a lot of good things. That was just one of the things I saw that's on the, on the government, um, on the U.S., uh, Council for Inter-Agency Homeless that.
And I would actually wager to bet that some of those ideas, they probably stole from us, those, those ideas, because those are things that we've been doing for a long time, and now I think they're using our model in a lot of different places for, um, homeless outreach.
We have a number of ones that are being used by other cities. It was, uh, um, before we forget, uh, public comment, can you read that in the recording?
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
I completely.
I totally forgot.
Forgot about it myself.
Mr. Zick had a public comment. Uh, Antelope Valley has the highest homeless population per capita than the City of L.A. or any place in Southern California. Probably the state. It's way past time that the AV has local control and control of the funding. I have for the past four years encourage AV leadership in the city council to form its own HUD district separate from L.A. County, like the City of Pasadena, Glendale, Long Beach. I've asked for a tax audit of all the taxes generated in the city that we send to L.A. This council is against it.
Well, that's categorically untrue. We just had that report with all the exact percentages that we keep on each of those taxes, so I, I think, I think he must, he missed the meeting, so. All right, anything, um, Mr. Law?
You have a question? Uh, on the homeless count, the, um, service plan area, that's only the Antelope Valley?
Correct.
Does that include, for example, Acton or?
I believe it does.
And does it go to Kern County as well, or just L.A. County?
Spat one.
Spat one. It's our region. Just to the border.
To the borders?
Yeah. I wasn't sure if it extended or not. Yeah, just to the border.
Okay, so forty-seven, forty-seven hundred and fifty-five in two thousand twenty for, for the, um, service plan eight, uh, one, service plan eight, and two hundred eighty-nine of Palmdale only, right?
Correct.
That's about six percent of the total homeless. Where's the majority of the homeless? Where are they residing? Or not residing, but where are they staying?
That's comp, the, for, the spat one is a combination with unincorporated Lancaster and Palmdale.
Right, I understand, but where are the, most of these people, or is it just spread all over? I mean, it seems like Palmdale fortunately is a very low count. I think it's only six percent of the entire amount, yet we're, what, probably a third of the population of Antelope Valley? City of Palmdale is maybe perhaps, something like that? Yet we're only six percent of the, we only have six percent of the, of the homeless count.
Did I graph that any, in any way, or anything on this?
On the LASSA website, um, we're able to see where, um, the different population is and, uh, by each community and unincorporated areas. So that, uh, that, um, information is available.
Could I see that, please? I mean, in other words, when you have.
Well, get that sent to you.
I think we'd all like to see that, so. Okay, anything else from the council or?
Just a question on, uh, these team members that you have listed here, um, do any of them provide services to foster children, or is that a whole different population that provides services to, to those specific children?
Those that are listed here, um, are not specific to foster children, but they may still, um, through their households, come in for services, various services.
Okay. Anything else? Well, as we absorb this, and, um, I think, um, we may have some additional questions for you after we digest this a little better. So, JJ, anything else on this?
No, appreciate your support and appreciate all of our partners out there that help our team and our collaboration. I think it's in the numbers and, and the mention of modeling, you know, I talked to the Supervisor's Homeless Deputy, and, uh, she is thrilled with the relationship she has with our team, and I, I, I just want to commend your entire team.
Yeah, I think we, I think we all know people on each one of these agencies and these boards, and, uh, that's, that's what it's about. It's about that, it's about those partnerships. Okay, uh, I mean, got to finalize my agenda here. I think that's it. Anything else?
Moving to the turn.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.